Hi, we'd like to welcome everyone to the Source Weekly's endorsement interviews. We are joined today by Edie Jones and Kevin Eckard, who are running for the Sisters School Board. We appreciate both of you for putting yourself out there and also really appreciate you taking the time to speak with us today. I know everybody's got busy schedules, especially during campaign season, so thank you both. The way this will go is we will ask a question and then we will alternate between the two of you, who will get to answer first on each question. So for this one, Edie, we're going to start with you. If you could just introduce yourself and say why you're running for this position?
Hello. Yes, I'm happy to introduce myself. I'm Edie Jones. I have lived in the district for 30 years. And the reason I'm running, I think, is that because I've been in education all of my life and all of my adult life. And when I retired as the executive director of a not-for-profit, it seemed to be a logical way to continue my interest in education and working with kids and making sure I was participating in a positive way in the community. I have a passion for early childhood. And so with the preschool Promise Dollars that came to the Sisters District, I was excited to know that that had happened. And it just gave me kind of the timing that this was the time for me to offer my services on the school board.
Great. Kevin, could you introduce yourself and say why you're running for this position?
Yeah, my name's Kevin Eckert. I live in Sisters. Currently, I have one final student in Sisters High School, one graduated last year. Although I have not been here for 30 years like Edie, my time is a lot shorter. I've volunteered in schools for many years. I currently volunteer at Sisters High School as a soccer coach and helping out with some other potential CTE, some vocational type of programming as well. My primary, kind of the tipping point for me to get into the school board race, as I never really had aspirations for running for an office, is the, just the amount of change we're seeing in Sisters as far as the likely expansion and enrollment and then the school bond, which both Edie and I wholeheartedly and fully support passing as a continuation of the previous bond, so not a new tax, a continuation of the previous way we were raising funds for capital improvements. That will allow Sisters to build a badly needed replacement elementary school. My day job, I specialize in running complex projects and budgets. As a trained architect, as a builder and a developer, I thought I would be able to provide a little more balance and a different type of perspective to the school board as our district is going to expand both in students and facilities.
Great, thanks. So we'll just go back and forth, who starts the questions? This one will go to Kevin then first. What's your biggest concern for the students of your district?
Well, I think the primary concern I would have right now coming out of a, well, slowly coming out of a pandemic is, you know, how to serve those students next year, how to, I wouldn't necessarily say catch up, but how to respond to what has been a very unusual last year and by then, year and a half. I think our school district, being a smaller district, responded extremely well, changed their class size structure so we could get kids back in schools much sooner than a lot of schools, you know, by limiting their, their class numbers and their, and their actual courses, by having Fridays as a flex day for teachers to catch up, for outreach into the community, to find students who are falling behind. So I feel like we did the best possible job we could. And I really thanked our administrators and our teachers continuously for that. At the same time, this next year, I think, will be very important for bringing a lot of students along who missed on some opportunities.
Great. Edie, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, fine.
Great.
I think probably very similar to what Kevin just said, the transformation from going primarily in, in a distance learning situation or a hybrid situation of education, back to trends, the transformation that has to happen as full-time students and figuring out how we do that well, so that kids that may have dropped behind are caught up, that we don't lose anybody because of that transition, and just being mindful of how we do that. And then I think the other biggest thing is the fact that our city is growing and, which means our schools will grow. The, all of the different adjustments the district has to keep in mind as they accommodate that growth. And hopefully, the school bond issue will pass so that that will allow a new building, so that will make it a lot easier. If it doesn't pass, then we have a lot of other decisions to make. So I think that's, those are the two biggest things ahead of us.
Thank you. Edie, what do you, what makes a good school board member, in your opinion?
I think a school board member needs to be very mindful of what their role is. And I bring to this position the experience of having not only served on several boards, but also having worked for organizations that were governed by boards. I remember a time when I was a fitness director for a YWCA, and there was a board director that did not like something that I was working on, and just on their own interrupted, interfered with the development of that, which caused quite a bit of confusion, a lot of money to the organization, and it really was very disconcerting to me in that role. The other, another time, I was, when I was serving on a Girl Scout Board for a large council, a vote came up for an issue that I was the only negative vote on. The reason for that was because I felt very strongly that by voting in whatever this policy was, we were going to tie the hands of staff and keep them from being able to operate as well and as efficiently as we wanted them to. So I think a board has many, many decisions to make, and one of those is being really hiring a strong superintendent, being very in communication with him or her, and making sure that the district is being run, but putting a lot of support and trust in the work that, that they can do with the staff and making sure that staff then continues doing well.
Kevin, do you need me to repeat the question?
What makes a good school board member?
Tonight.
Okay. As Edie just pointed out, I would say that, you know, the word mindful came up in the beginning. I would also just say a good listener. I'm, I'm coming into this a relative novice on school boards. I've not held a school board position. I've been involved in the schools quite a bit, but I'm, I'm, I think I have a fairly good understanding of what I, what I know, and more importantly, what I don't know. So I'm coming in partly knowing that I'll have a steep learning curve, but that's okay. I'll take that on and take that on promptly, but also aware that I have a perspective with current students in school, access to parents through coaching and other volunteer activities, and access to, you know, high school principal and superintendent through other activities that I feel like I've, I've already got a, a good understanding of the folks I'll be serving, you know, students all the way through administration and parents. So yeah, I would just, and to echo what Edie said, knowing where, what your role is and isn't. I work with a lot of boards. I work with a lot of commissions, and it's pretty common for those boards and commissions to overstep what their, what their vested and mandated role really is. So you'll probably find Edie and I agreeing a lot, so it's not going to make for a very spicy debate, but yeah, understanding what your role is and isn't, I completely concur. And our district has run very well for many years because school board members have really embraced that stance, so.
Shoot, well, let's spice it up a little bit with a little more controversial question then. So the legislature may soon pass a bill that allows local governments the option to ban people with concealed carry permits from bringing firearms into public buildings. Should all the schools in the district office in Sisters be gun-free zones with anyone who has a concealed weapon permit required to check their gun at the door? And we are at, Kevin?
Oh, guns. What was the last statistic? There's seven guns per human in America or some such thing. There's, we're armed to the teeth. So guns in schools. So I'll say this, I'm, one of, one of the many positives of the school bond in the elementary school, moving over to the campus with the other two schools, is that makes security by, you know, Deschutes County sheriffs who are kind of running back and forth between the two campuses, and just security within the facilities much easier to maintain. So to not wade into a highly charged debate about gun control in America, I will just say that we have a unique chance coming up in Sisters to have much safer and more secure and easier to monitor facilities. So that's the first step. If gun control laws come into America, and I believe there are, and to Oregon, and they actually have a chance of passing, you know, yeah, yes, do we need to look at what our founders intended? Sure. Do we need to look at the fact that we're not carrying muskets around anymore to hunt on our way home to survive? Probably. So yeah, there probably needs to be some sensible measures taken to, just for general public safety. We're having like three or four mass shootings a week right now. That's insane. That, that has to be, has to be addressed. We can do that at a local level.
Great. Would you like a repeat, Edie?
No, thank you. And, and I could just almost start out by saying I agree with everything that Kevin just said. I really do not feel that guns belong into our, in our school buildings, that perhaps an officer that is there needs to have the, have one available, but nobody else. I really don't feel, I think that, that if teachers feel like they have guns, then they also put themselves in a role that, that they're not intended. So no, I don't feel there's any reason for people to bring in a gun. And even if they have a concealed weapon permit, it's still, they still need to leave those guns. They, they are not, they don't belong in a school building.
Edie, we'll start this one with you. The legislature in March allocated $250 million for summer programs to help students catch up and gain enrichment following this year of online instruction. How do you think this funding should be used in your district?
Oh, that's a wonderful question. And I, having been the owner and director of a children's camp, I can think of 100 different ways to use it in all kinds of enrichments because kids, kids are thirsty to learn more, not necessarily sit at a desk to learn more, but there are all kinds of skills such as athletic skills that they can be using and learning how to cooperate and socialize better. They can also be doing activities like writing and, and being part of a literary group where they are reading and having book clubs and things of that nature, if that's something interests them. I think it's really important to find out what kids are interested in, what gets them excited. And from that, then make decisions as to how to use that money the best way. Because if kids are excited about what it is we're offering, then they will come and they will stay and they will participate and they'll learn from it. And it'll be the skill of whoever's leading, whatever those activities are, to also, if, if they're doing something that like, an architecture thing that Kevin might dream up, that they are building some kind of a building, that there's also some math within it and some geometry in it and all the things that also go into building a building, maybe some social study activities where they really do volunteering and going to places like nursing homes and other places where kids are that have less money. It's one, wonderful that that money is coming our way. And I think that we can be very creative thinking out of the box as to how to use it.
Thank you, Edie. Kevin?
Yep. So at the risk of losing all those under 18 voters, I would, I would not say summer school. So I agree with Edie. Further, we have really, again, Sisters is fortunate. Our Sisters Park and Recreation District has a, has a tremendous staff. There's a lot of programs already in the schools, you know, outdoor expedition programs. And, you know, we have, again, more, more familiar at the high school level, that's my, my current lens, but, you know, we have a flight science program. We have, we just have things that everybody in Sisters is very proud of. So I think we already have the infrastructure in place if we were to receive some of this funding. And I think we have people in place who could really help with that programming. And then as Edie's pointing out, there's just a lot of parents too, that weigh in with volunteer help and create programming as well. So yeah, if we were able to receive funding, I would, within our rules and, and what we are allowed to do, I would look at sort of funneling that towards agencies who already are going to be doing a lot of summer programming to support, support their efforts.
Gotcha. So obviously, the backdrop of everything this year is the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll start with Kevin on this one. What's your overall impression of how the district has handled the pandemic and what might you have done differently had you been on the board?
Yeah. You shared about that a little bit before. I was really impressed. And again, I, I believe we had the capability as a smaller district to move pretty quickly from what we learned last spring, to be ready for this fall. So I can't necessarily point to anything that would have been done differently since there were so many, you know, state mandated, Oregon Department of Health mandates, and just a lot of information to wade through. So I am, I'm glad I was not an administrator during that time. I really feel for that, for the decisions and all that they had to weigh. Again, emerging from it, there was a lot of debate about maintaining our four, four-day school week and allowing teachers and administrators and volunteers and outreach to occur on that Friday. I would advocate that we return to at least a late start or early release on a Wednesday, just to allow some time and space for, for outreach and to catch up. Beyond that, yeah, I think I've basically shared between earlier and now, kind of some thoughts on that. So let Edie have a run.
Are you good on that question? And would you like a repeat?
Would you repeat it, please?
Yeah. What's your overall impression of how the district handled the COVID-19 pandemic? And what might you have done differently if you were on the board at that time?
Well, I have been on the board at this time as the COVID's been going on. And with that, we have had the wonderful privilege of at every monthly board meeting, hearing how the schools are going, what the principals are sharing as to their challenges and also how they, where they feel they are succeeding. And I have been extremely impressed, not only with the principals, but with the teachers in our district, of the hard work that has gone in to the dance that they've had to do. I mean, they have had to be extremely flexible, and they've been doing this. They've had some kids that have been home completely in the elementary school. We have been in, in school for much of, of the COVID. But there are still some kids that are still doing primarily at home, distance learning. So they've, teachers have been doing both. They have done, doing double jobs. And I think that there was lots of consideration as to how we stay within the restrictions from the governor, and that Kurt and the principals have done an amazing job of really paying attention and being adaptable and flexible as to when to bring kids back or to how much to bring them back. And I don't know that I would have done anything different. I, I just applaud them for what they've done. I think there's some things that they have learned that will carry on. I think that they will pick up some really good pieces of information from the COVID of, of ways that they can engage kids that are difficult to reach. There have been some home visiting even in the high school area, which is, I think, a marvelous addition. The, the counselors have worked overtime. And so picking up on learning what they have done that has worked, but also paying attention to those kids that maybe have dropped through the cracks and figuring out what we could have done, that maybe we didn't do, that might have made a difference. All of those things will come out of COVID. Thank you.
The past year, Edie, well, this one's going to come to you first.
Okay.
The past year has brought increased attention to the needs of people and students of color. What, if any, changes would you make or propose in the district to better meet the needs of students of color?
That's a wonderful question. I think it's also a difficult one in our district in that our population is not particularly diversified. We have several Hispanic families, a few African-American families. I'm not sure if we have Asian families, but we are primarily a Caucasian community. But that doesn't mean that we can't do a lot of education, even as far down as in the preschool. Books can be read that have, that focus on people of other, other nationalities where skin color may be different, helping everybody remember we're one human race and that sometimes we have different cultures and work differently. So I think through all of the grades, that can be a real strong emphasis of learning whatever we can about other people, wherever they were. My family actually had 17 different exchange students at the time our kids were growing up. And that was a wonderful way for us to learn about other countries and, and the people that lived there. Unfortunately, it meant all my kids traveled all over and went to school all over, and I now have a son living in Germany. And so, you know, a side effect of having so many people was that we learned to love and live with people of all different nationalities. And, and so I think that just educating kids as best they can, and then looking to see where we might be discriminating or having situations that really do isolate and not recognize kids of different genders or different sexual preferences. All of those things are part of education for kids. And we need to be opening our eyes and aware of what they are and finding ways to teach the very best we can, so kids are open to all kids.
Kevin, do you want me to repeat the question? Are you good?
No, I'm good. I would like to not only talk about, you know, the, as Edie was just pointing to at the end there, the, the student's ethnicity, but just open support and love for all students. So there was a great editorial in our, in our local paper this morning. An open letter of support for all marginalized youth, you know, sexual preference, skin color, religious preference, all of it. And I, it really nailed it. And our, and our school superintendent also sent out a note last week, just making sure that all kids know they're supported. That should be our focus, you know, inclusion. Everybody's normal. We're not normal, however you want to look at it, but there is no, there is no categories of kids that are different than other kids as far as how they should be accepted. As a policymaker or a board, I think all you can do is continue to educate and look for opportunities to improve upon, making sure all students and families feel welcome. But I'm, I'm glad we're in a community that's having open conversations about this. It will make administrator and teachers and families capability to address this much easier.
Great. So Kevin, we'll start with you again on this one. The school board's responsible for setting policy for the district. What, if any, policies would you want to revisit or adopt if the, in the district, if you were elected?
So I don't necessarily have a specific axe to grind. We're going to go through a lot of change beyond our, I just want to first address where the district's going to be. We're going to have a new high school principal. We're going to have a new middle school principal. We're also watching our current high school principal transition to a new role as an administrator to help support all the schools in programming and, and staffing. So I think first, we just got to get our feet under us. We're also losing a couple of really great teachers to retirement at the high school level, one who runs the Woods Program for example, Tony Cosby. So I think there's going to need to be some attention paid to how those sorts of programs, I, you know, they'll be different, but they can still be great. So, so I think first of all, let's just get ourselves set and also let's look at, you know, emerging from the pandemic. Beyond that, school bond passes, or, you know, I hate to contemplate it, doesn't, but there's opportunities for more programming as well. I'm a big advocate for some, some less traditional pathways to keep at least kids that I know from, who are falling out of the system right now, to reengage them and get them back in the system. So I'd kind of say that, and again, I'm, I'm open to just seeing what other things, issues and other, the school board and administrators are going to raise as well, and just learn and contribute.
Thank you. Edie, apologies for skipping over your incumbent status last time. So this, this question, this question, you know, may or may not ring for you, but what, if any, policies would you like to revisit in the board?
I don't think of any right off the bat. I think that we have done a good job of addressing what we needed to this year. We, at each board meeting, we have had readings, first readings and then second readings of new policies that have come along, or, or not necessary corrections, but updates on policies, on discipline and on staffing and on equity and all of those. We've worked hard this year to bring those up to date. And so I don't know that there's any that I would change. I think that it's important that we are open-minded and keep ourselves alert to situations that come up that, that require, may require a policy that we haven't thought of in the past. And, and I, with, along with Kevin, am very much in favor of different kinds of education. All kids learn so many different ways. And I think that we need to bring into our district and our school system as opportunities in as many different ways, with project-based apprenticeships, internships, working with the community so that they learn hands-on, very, very practical skills. Not all kids are going to go on to college, and we hope everybody graduates and then moves into something that is extremely important and exciting to them. So I think that that's, that's where our focus needs to be. And we will be losing some good valuable teachers, and, but we'll be gaining some new ones. And hopefully, we'll have a new, new building that we will also be looking at. New building that we will also be looking at. And I'm sure there'll be changes and policies that we'll have to step to that.
Edie, we'll start with you for this question. Social media has really garnered more attention as people have been quarantined during. This pandemic and it's it's also increasingly the way people communicate for good or for good or bad with with school board members and elected officials. It's also become a real challenge for people as they move into this more public space. What's your approach to using social media and and your strategy for coping with those pressures?
You're you're kind of asking the wrong person. I really do very little social media. Occasionally, I will put something on Facebook, but I don't really use it very, very much. I do know that it can be. A medium that generates hurt and and hateful kind of. Expressions that are are not that should not happen. But not being a social media person, I really don't even know how that can be controlled. So I'm going to have to pass, I think, to to Kevin because that's I don't I don't have teenagers. So I don't have anybody really using it. And I just hope that. Adults can be the guides for kids if they are using it inappropriately. And help them know how it's a useful, good tool. And approach it appropriately. So, thank you.
Kevin, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm happy to answer. So this is only going to underscore Sister's image as Mayberry, but. We don't really rely on social media a whole lot around here for communicating with. But well, any really folks in in most any position. You know, I heard from three parents yesterday about different things in person because I ran into them either at the post office or because we were grabbing dinner, you know. If you're on the school board, are we going to get that two week spring break back? You know, stuff like that. So. Sisters has a you you have a way of seeing a lot of your constituents on a daily basis. So thankfully. Because social media, it seems to encourage much more poor behavior than good behavior. We are able to meet and see folks personally and. That tends to keep people's behavior at least if you're not agreeing that you're at least civil. So. I I like Edie and I joked when we were on a different forum, you know, neither of us is launching a big media campaign for this, right? We're kind of offering ourselves to forums like yours and and really appreciate the thoughtful questions and then just, you know, the the folks of Sisters will kind of make their decision. So. You know, other than monitoring things, just to make sure my own kids are being smart and respectful. I don't I don't, yeah, social media won't have a big impact that I see on either Edie or I or other board members. So. I mean, again, people can can react poorly. That's 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 what they can use it for. But luckily, school board, it doesn't tend to react to those folks.
Well, we have another question that kind of maybe will be more in all of both of your wheelhouses. What responsibilities do school board members have in terms of communication with staff, parents and the community at large? And that can be in any format. And Kevin, this is yours again. So I know you touched on some of it already.
Yeah, I I think to underscore that, I think you just have to be available for folks to comment. And and there's. There are appropriate things school board members can do and there are things that just aren't, you know, we're not, we're not vested to take on. So. I think Edie and I and other board members are are aware that in these positions, if. If elected, you're you're basically, you know. You know, we joked you can't go to the post office. We've got a local mailbox in a hurry because again, you're gonna. You're gonna see folks. You're probably going to hold the door for somebody, you know. So being on school board, I understand will only. Be kind of an extension of that where I might be soccer coaching, but I also might might get a couple of things shared that. People are feeling about their schools that they want somebody to know. So. We're fortunate that, again, we're still in a community that's small enough that personal interaction goes a long way.
Edie, would you like a repeat of that?
No, I think I'm fine. I I think there are. Our specifics as to how board members do need to operate. As to where they can gather or where they can can greet each other as. As to so that we don't appear to be having a forum or having a a school board meeting that's inappropriate. And I think that we also know that if we if we have an. An argument, say if I was on the school board and had an argument with a teacher, it would be not appropriate for me to go to that teacher. I mean, I would have to follow the right right prerogatives, the right pathways. Through a superintendent. So probably not even to go to a to a principal. I think if my if I had a. Disagreement with a parent or feeling that something was happening. I would need to go to the superintendent and allow that person to be the caregiver of the information. So I I think we do need to be careful. I think situations like lots of bond issue, I would. I can say here on the forum that I'm very much for the bond issue. But to write a letter to the editor and even even if I was only writing as an individual. With people knowing that I was a school board member, I don't think that would be appropriate. I think that that I need to back off from that kind of thing. So I think that it is important for school board members to be aware of their position of leadership. And also know of restrictions that might be in their best favor.
Well, we are coming to the end of our formal questions. At this point, we want to just give each of you an opportunity to. Bring up anything we didn't bring up and just let us know, you know, why why folks should vote for you. I think we're at Edie starting on this one.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the opportunity here to answer questions. I think. One of the things that have informed like this is help us the candidates sort through our own thinking. And recognize where we do stand on certain issues. Sometimes we don't take time to really think about that until questions like this come up. So I thank you very much. I think it's very valuable. I think the main thing I would just like to mention is that I do have experience. I have been on the Bend International. School Board. I was part of the organ the group that started that. Before there actually was a board and then moved on to the board and have been excited about the way it has has succeeded and continued forth. I've have was appointed last February to our school board and I have enjoyed. Being on it. And as Kevin mentioned, there's a learning curve. I definitely have found that there's been much to learn. And now also being on the board, I'm a part of the budget committee. So I'm. Again, learning a lot of new things that are in relationship to that. So my experience from boards, I think, has been valuable. I I do have the the real love for early learning. And so I think that being on the school board just gives me opportunity to encourage our district to be. Really mindful of how important that is within our our community, whether or not it's as a. Preschool within our building as it is now with the preschool promise or in other ways to support families with young children. And encouraging their opportunities to get their kids ready. So when they go to kindergarten, kindergarten is not what it used to be. Kids come, when they come, they are expected to to. Know quite a bit. And so we as a community need to help parents know how to do that. I also am very in favor of projects. Community. Connections, apprenticeships, internships, things like that that help our kids. Know that there's a place for them within society and they finish up very well prepared. And. So I'm excited about the opportunity to serve longer and serve for another term. And I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my views.
Thank you. I apologize. I wasn't muted that whole time. I guess you might have been hearing background noise. So Kevin, tell us what. Anything we missed?
Well, like Edie, I want to thank you for the opportunity and and. Also, your questions, very, very thoughtful and I've learned some things about myself and and Edie as well today. So so thank you. I also want to acknowledge Edie's service to the board previously. She has by all measures done a great job. So. You know, I I feel like the Sisters voters have have good candidates across the board to choose from. And that's great. You know, it's it's good to be in a community that supports their volunteer positions and takes them very. I wouldn't say seriously, just just takes them in a way that is supportive of the overall community. You know, I I put myself forward on the board because we have a lot of educators and we have a lot of folks with. School background on the board, which is very relevant and very important. But we also have board members who are leaving the board who brought a different experience and a different. Just set of eyes and viewpoints to the board. So that was really one of the major reasons I wanted to be involved. Having a a son currently in the school district. Having access and being very involved with lots of parents for lots of other activities. I I thought it would provide good balance to the makeup of the next board. And then finally, as I shared in the beginning, and I'll just end with the amount of change and growth we're going to see, I see as a tremendous opportunity. Folks are gonna, it's challenging. Folks are going to be on both sides of whether we should be growing or maybe. Should we try to prohibit, you know, keep from growing, which is just a losing battle. But I think it's more of how to embrace the change, the opportunities. Hopefully a past school bond and really leverage that and and our already great assets and resources that we have. To grow and continue having, you know, one of the best districts in the state. So that's what I would offer our voters. That's what I would bring.
Well, I want to thank both of you again for taking the time to be with us today and and share your thoughts and positions with readers. I really appreciate with. Everything that's going on with your campaigns and 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 everything in Sisters that that you do take a moment to reach out and. Talk to voters in this fashion. I you you have an incredible amount of growth going on in Sisters. I I can see a future where. You probably will be holding the door for folks that you don't know pretty soon and. Meeting people you don't know. It's a it's incredibly growing time for every city in central Oregon. And I know serving on the school board, that'll certainly be something you guys are facing. So thank you all for sharing with us.